Ladies and gentlemen, may we have your attention for the procession of the heads of state and the heads of government. The... The Secretary General of the CARICOM, Dr. Carla N. Barnett.
Antigua and Bermuda, Honorable Gaston Brown.
Commonwealth of the Bahamas, the Honorable Philip E. Davis.
Barbados, the Honorable Mia Amor Motley.
Belize, the Honorable John Briseño.
Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell.
Cooperative Republic of Guyana, His Excellency Mohammed Airfan Ali.
The Republic of Haiti, the Honorable Dr. Ariel Henry.
Jamaica, the Most Honourable Andrew Michael Hollis, represented by Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith.
Montserrat, the Honorable Joseph Farrell.
St. Gibson Neves, Dr. the Honorable Timothy Harris, represented by Ambassador Lionel Sidney Osborne.
St. Lucia, the Honorable Philip J. Pierre.
St. Vincent and the Grenadines, Dr. the Honorable Ralph E. Goncalves.
The Republic of Trinidad and Tobago, the Honorable Keith Rowley.
Bermuda, the Honorable David Berg, represented by Honorable Minister Walter Henry Roban.
Turks and Caicos Islands, the Honorable Charles Washington Missick.
The Republic of Suriname, His Excellency Chandri Kaprasad Santoki, Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community.
And as the final pictures are being taken... That is a beautiful sight, ladies and gentlemen, everybody with their camera out. May we invite the heads of government, the heads of state, and their respective... ...the children that have accompanied them to leave the stage on the right side of the stage where we're standing. And, yes, please. Thank you so much.
And while the heads of states are making their way back to their seats, we welcome onstage Bousa Ensemble. Everybody okay? Beautiful, everyone's fine.
While we're asking for the microphones for the singers of... For the... The lead singers, please. And while we're covering that, we're inviting... We have in front of you the Foreign Affairs Assembly, Vocal Assembly, which will bring for you our national anthem and the CARICOM song. Before we do that, of course, we need to invite you officially, and in this case, Your Excellency Chandri Kaprasad Santoki, President of the Republic of Suriname and Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community; Honorable John Briseño, Prime Minister of Belize and outgoing Chairman; Your Excellencies, Heads of State, Government of the Caribbean Community; Your Excellency Antonio Guterres, Secretary General of the United Nations; Your Excellency Georges Rebelo Pinto Chikoti, Secretary General of the Organization of African Caribbean and Pacific States; His Excellency Rodolfo Sabonge, Secretary General, Association of Caribbean States; Other heads of delegations, other heads of regional and international institutions, delegates, and all people of the Caribbean community, welcome. You are already standing, so in this case, please be standing, please remain standing for our official national anthem.
[Singing in Caribbean language]
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 Thank you, Bousa Ensemble. Ladies and gentlemen, wasn't that amazing? Can I have another applause, please? You may be seated.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful.
That's how beautiful it is.
At this time, we would like to present you with a short promotional film of the Republic of Suriname. Okay. Well, you have to imagine the sound, it is quite beautiful.
We would now like to invite the Secretary of the Interreligious Council of Suriname, Dr. Robert Bipat. Will lead us in prayer.
Yes, I was already afraid to be too short for this walkway. I hope you can all see me. Your Excellency, President Santoki of our Republic of Suriname, respected Secretary General of the United Nations, distinguished leaders of the Caribbean community and all organizations, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Interreligious Council of Suriname, I hereby send you universal greetings of peace. We were asked to perform a short prayer to open this conference. And I humbly ask you to stand up and join me in this prayer. It is a universal prayer, so you can join as you please. All praise to the Lord of the worlds, the beneficent and merciful Master of the day of requital. Thee do we serve and Thee do we beseech for help. Please guide us on the right path, the path of those upon whom Thee has bestowed favors, not those upon whom wrath is brought down, nor those who go astray. Almighty God, please grant our leaders wisdom to bring this conference to a successful ending, a conclusion that may bring prosperity to all mankind in general, but even more for our Caribbean community in particular, a conclusion that will consider a sustainable solution for our socio-economic problems and of course, sustainable management of our national resources with maximum preservation of our fragile environment. May I thank you and may God bless this conference and you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bipat. Before we start the remarks of several prominent members of this community, there is a small confession that I have to make. Of course, coming to this event, of course, you know, as you usually do, you polish up a little bit because you have guests, and we did, yes. We polished up some buildings and we polished up some roads and we polished up some trees and even polished up some people. And I thought, you know, we couldn't become and get more beautiful here in Suriname. But then, here you are, the beautiful Caribbean community. Welcome once again, all of you. May we invite, as our first speaker, the Secretary General of the CARICOM for her remarks, the Honorable Dr. Carla Barnett.
Your Excellency Chandri Kaprasad Santoki, President of the Republic of Suriname and Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community; Honorable John Briseño, Prime Minister of Belize and outgoing Chairman; Your Excellencies, Heads of State and Government of the Caribbean community; Your Excellency Antonio Guterres, Secretary General of the United Nations; Your Excellency Georges Rebelo Pinto Chikoti, Secretary General of the Organization of African Caribbean and Pacific States; His Excellency Rodolfo Sabonge, Secretary General, Association of Caribbean States; Other heads of delegations, other heads of regional and international institutions, delegates, people of the Caribbean community. It is my pleasure to welcome all of you to the 43rd regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, CARICOM. I am sure that I speak on behalf of all delegations here when I express heartfelt thanks to the government and the people of Suriname for the warmth of the greetings and the generosity of the hospitality that we have all experienced since our arrival here. It has certainly provided the appropriate environment for the conduct of a productive meeting, the outcome of which would be beneficial to the people of our community. In the past six months, our community has had to maneuver through very delicate situations. The calm and steady hand of our outgoing Chair, the Honorable John Briseño, Prime Minister of Belize ensured the overall interests of the community, remained the guiding principles of our actions. Thank you, Prime Minister. In welcoming our new Chair, His Excellency President Santoki of Suriname, I am confident that given the energy and vision for CARICOM, that much can be achieved under his stewardship. I extend special welcome and congratulations to the Honorable Deacon Mitchell as he joins the Conference of Heads of Government for the first time. Your recent victory at the polls is a reminder of our community's proud tradition of peaceful and democratic change of government. The community looks forward to your fresh perspectives as you maintain Grenada's strong commitment to advancing our regional integration. Congratulations are also extended to the four recipients of the community's highest award, the Order of the Caribean the Order of the Caribbean Community. Each, in their own field, has made sterling contributions to our region and is fully deserving of the recognition that a grateful community is bestowing on them. Our community is also appreciative of the presence of the United Nations Secretary General, His Excellency Antonio Guterres, whose advocacy on behalf of small and vulnerable countries like ours has been truly outstanding. Secretary General, we truly appreciate your abiding interest in our region and look forward to working with you to achieve the results from your discussions with the heads of government earlier today. Chair, Heads of Government, we gather here in the immediate aftermath of two broader summits, one hemispheric and the other more global. The result of those discussions, particularly the Summit of the Americas in Los Angeles, USA, have the potential to have a positive impact on the social, environmental and economic aspects of our lives. This comes at a time when we are being severely tested by the numerous global challenges which collectively have a deleterious effect on our ability to return to, much less maintain, our trajectory of growth and development. As much as the insights gleaned and the promises made that those four can assist us, in the final analysis, it is what we do for ourselves that will make the difference. And making that difference in the lives of the people of the community is what has been the impetus driving the initiatives that we have been undertaking. It is evident that the energy with which we have been addressing the issue of food production and security, led by the President of Guyana and supported by a ministerial task force, this has gone beyond focusing on the objective of cutting the regional food import bill by 25% by 2025, important as that is, to encompassing comprehensive actions to create an agri-food sector that will finally put our region on the road to self-sufficiency. This work has become even more crucial, given the global food crisis, first triggered by the supply chain difficulties and then vastly worsened by the Russian invasion of Ukraine, involving two countries that produce a significant amount of the world's grain and wheat. Just as important as food and nutrition security is the existential threat of climate change. The latest report of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change last cautioned that without deep and immediate emissions reductions across sectors, limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius, will be beyond reach. The impact of that is already manifesting itself in our region. It is why we have been so forcefully in our advocacy for greater access to climate financing, to help us adapt to the phenomenon, as well as to respond to the loss and damage caused by climatic events. There has been some headway and we will continue to struggle along with our partners among the global small island and low-lying coastal developing states, SIDS, because success in this fight is necessary to make a difference in the lives of our people. A major consideration going forward is striving to make the difference in the life of our youth. 60% of the population of the Caribbean community is under the age of 30. Our young people are central to our efforts at building a sustainable and resilient society. We must therefore never cease in our attempts to create opportunities to develop and utilize their creativity and innovative skills and to explore avenues to facilitate youth involvement in planning and preparation for the future. A CARICOM Youth Forum was held last month, which brought together youth groups, youth leaders, youth workers, and other key stakeholders to examine current youth development needs. The Dean of the CARICOM Youth Ambassadors will present to this conference salient recommendations arising from the event for the attention of the Heads of Government. Over the next two days, deliberations of the conference will include engagements with the Secretary General of the Organization of African Caribbean and Pacific States, His Excellency Georges Rebelo Pinto Chikote. I welcome him to the region and to Suriname. Chair, Heads of Government, we meet at a time of severe global crisis in three vital areas, namely, food, energy, and finance. Addressing solutions for our region requires collective intellect and acting together. This task is not beyond us, as we have proven time and time again. Let us therefore, once more, onto the breach and make a difference in the lives of our people. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Secretary General of the CARICOM, the Honorable Dr. Carla Barnett. May we invite to the stage the newly elected Head of Government, Prime Minister of the Bahamas, the Honorable Philip Davis.
Fellow colleagues, CARICOM Secretary General, Dr. Carla Barnett, our outgoing Chairman, the Honorable John Bruseno, incoming Chairman, His Excellency Chandiraj Pasar Santoki, United Nations Secretary General, Antonio Guterres, and fellow Heads of Government. As one of the newer Heads of Government in the region, I've been grateful for the opportunities during the first nine months of my administration that allowed me to connect and reconnect with friends and colleagues from around the region. It is a pleasure to welcome the newly elected leaders from St. Lucia, the Honorable Philip Pear and Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, as well. Each one of us faces the extraordinary challenges associated with these times. These occasions to meet and work together are a gift and I know many of you share my determination to make the most of the opportunities they present. Colleagues, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas gained full independence in 1973, the same year that the Caribbean Community and Common Market were founded. It is providential that in 2023, in the Bahamas, we will observe our 50th anniversary celebrations and in the days leading up to that observance, we will hand over the Chair of CARICOM. This is an opportune juncture to remind ourselves of the many ways our community of friends and partners are bound together. Our connection only begins with shared geography. Like any family, our members do not always see eye to eye, but our interwoven histories, traditions, and relationships provide a foundation for meaningful deliberation, collaboration, and innovation. Forty-nine years ago, we were focused on the potential opportunities of regional integration. Today, we find ourselves focused on confronting shared challenges, including the economic constraints and vulnerabilities inherent to small island developing states, the ongoing COVID pandemic, which includes new variants, depleted healthcare systems, long-term health impacts, and the need to strengthen prevention, surveillance, and treatment. A global inflation crisis, which leaves many of our people struggling to afford food, energy, and housing costs. Social security systems stretched to the maximum as we seek to provide safety nets. And of course, the existential threat posed by climate change. It is striking that so many of our most urgent struggles derive in great part from external causes. We are each responsible for making our individual countries stronger and more resilient to the impact of external events. But, the history of our region makes clear that we can have a greater impact if we also join forces and stand together. The Bahamas is one of the 10 countries in the world most vulnerable to climate change. While every country in the world is facing adverse and extreme weather events, the countries in our region face extraordinary and immediate risk. We have heard for many, many years about the good intentions of others. I know you join me in seeing the urgency of moving beyond promises and pledges. It's time for action. Fortunately, there is hope on horizon. Due to our joint and persistent advocacy, work is now underway in the global community on the development of a multi-dimensional vulnerability index that will better measure our development needs and improve access to development assistance. But we also have to be careful about the components of the vulnerability index and what weight will be placed to each of those aspects. This August, we have been invited to host the UNFCC Regional Heads of Government Meeting pertaining to climate financing and adaptation ahead of COP27. I invite you all to attend. The Caribbean, as a region, will need more than $50 billion per annum to finance adaptation efforts and disaster recovery. Over the last few years, many of our countries have not fared well. Small ocean economies gain in negotiating strength and influence when we work effectively as one. It is no exaggeration to say that if we do not stand together, we, each one of us, is in danger of falling apart. The deadline to attain the 2030 Sustainable Development Goals Agenda is a mere eight years away. Many of us are lagging in critical areas. There is no time to waste. So, what is standing in our way? What prevents us from moving closer to the ideals and aspirations of those who sat around that table forty-nine years ago before us and dreamt of better futures for us all? Friends, while the world's problems do wash up on our shores, sometimes we contribute to standing in the way of our own progress. We find it easy to walk away from settled agreements to pursue the course which we think will help our narrow national interests. Too many times, our countries have acquiesced to the pressures of larger, more developed states and the multinational corporations. Their approach of divide and conquer has hurt us all. Might we be deriving greater value from our tourism industries if we had continued to negotiate in concert with some of the large multinational corporations? And might we have fared better during the COVID-19 pandemic if we had acted together to secure vaccines and medicines? Just weeks ago, we lost a giant, the Barbadian writer George Lamming. He unflinchingly chronicled the legacy of colonialism and was a fierce believer in regional unity. In 1966, he wrote, "The architecture of our future is not only unfinished, but the scaffolding has hardly gone up." If we are honest, too little has been built since 1966. We can do much more. It's never too late to make progress in earnest. The scaffolding of our regional architecture, the scaffolding of our future, is in our hands. When I addressed the UN General Assembly last September, I made the point that you only will be safe when we are all safe. I reiterate this today with respect to our mutual destinies and I note that we have important leadership in our CARICOM Secretariat, headed by a female for the first time in our history. Under the effective leadership of Secretary General Barnett, let us harness the expertise of our Secretariat to move forward together. With our vision restored and our courage firmly bound, we in this region can achieve great things. We can lift our people out of poverty. We can facilitate the generation of wealth and opportunity. And most of all, we can ensure our survival long into the future. My friends, most of us are descended from people who are forced to cross the ocean at the bottom of a boat, chained, malnourished, and oppressed. They were able to do more than survive the brutality of their forced labor. They and the generations that followed built the foundations of our island nations. Surely, we can find the strength and courage to work together to face the challenges of our time. The National Anthem of Suriname reminds us that wherever our ancestors came from, we should take care of our country. With great respect, I will add, wherever our ancestors came from, we should take care of our countries and our region. We can find the determination and renewed purpose to leave behind something better for those who will follow us. I certainly believe we can, we will be better together. Thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister, Honorable Philip Davis, for your remarks and the reminder to keep seeing eye to eye. May we invite, for the next remarks, the newly elected Head of Government, the Prime Minister of Grenada, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell.
Thank you. Your Excellency, Chandiraj Pasar Santoki. Your Excellency, I will have to say to you that I kept reciting your first name, hoping that I would get past this moment. I hope I have not done violence to you. President of the Republic of Suriname and Chairman of the Conference of the Heads of Government of CARICOM, other distinguished colleagues, Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, the Secretary General of CARICOM, Dr. Barnett, Secretary General Antonio Guterres, a pleasure meeting you today. Other distinguished Secretary Generals who are present, Heads of Regional Institutions that are here with us today, members of the regional security system and all other regional institutions, other distinguished representatives from the Caribbean Congress of Labor and the Caribbean Private Sector Organization, other distinguished and specially invited guests. To all of our youth organizations and young people who are here with us this evening, to the many other nationals and citizens who are also tuning in and watching via social media platforms and different broadcasts across the Caribbean. To all of you, I send wonderful greetings from the people of PT Martinique, CARICOM, and Grenada, and I say good evening to all. Let me first start by saying, we normally say Grenada, CARICOM, and PT Martinique. And I have rearranged the order to PT Martinique, CARICOM, and Grenada. And I think Comrade Gonzalez would appreciate that the Grenadian islands are small and perhaps my becoming Prime Minister of Grenada is a reflection of the rearranging of the order of things where more attention is paid to the small and the little. I'm honored to join colleagues here in beautiful Suriname at this opening ceremony of the 43rd regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. I would like to place on record my gratitude to you, President Santoki, and the government and people of Suriname for the kind hospitality extended to my delegation since our arrival today. My delegation appreciates the efforts made to facilitate this important meeting and look forward to a successful outcome. I also wish to congratulate President Santoki on your assumption of the chairmanship of the conference. I have no doubt that on the year's stewardship, the conference will advance work that has been set before us and I look forward particularly to those engagements. It would be remiss of me if I did not commend Prime Minister Bruseno for his stewardship of the chairmanship of the conference over the last six months. I had the opportunity to meet you today and I am told that you've done a wonderful job over the last six months and so I want to express my own thank you, notwithstanding that I would not have been part of the work, but I'm sure that I will benefit from it as we go forward. Colleagues, I must add that I'm equally pleased to be sharing the stage this evening with the other newly elected Heads of Government of CARICOM, the Prime Minister of the Bahamas who just went before me and the Prime Minister of St. Lucia who will come after me. Our presence here this evening is confirmation and testament that democracy is alive and well in our region and resident in our beautiful Caribbean community. And I guess our transition processes seem far smoother, far swifter, and far more efficient than some of the larger nations that champion democracy. I say this against the background of the recently concluded national elections in Grenada on the 23rd of June. My clarion call in my political campaign and that of my colleagues was for Grenadians to choose a different direction that would transform and move the people of PT Martinique, CARICOM, and Grenada forward. We campaigned on a vision where we wanted to create a sustainable, equitable, and prosperous nation. nation for all. We envisaged a nation, and we believe that this is a time of choosing where we must stand resolute to enable every little boy and every little girl, every man, every woman, or every citizen, whoever dared to dream and looked before them, that they should know, that they would know, that all have an equal opportunity to realise their potential and enjoy the fruits of the labour, without fear of discrimination or to be told by critics and naysayers that their pursuit can't be done, or it is too hard or too difficult to achieve. We envisage a nation and believe that it is a time of choosing where we must be transformed into an eco-friendly, fair, equitable, dynamic, prosperous, and stable democracy capable of sustaining a high quality of life for our people. We envisage a nation and we believe that it is a time of choosing to ensure that the environment is protected and preserved for the use and enjoyment of our sons and daughters and both our current and future generations. A nation that is a model for sustainable development for small island developing states, where its citizens take pride in their culture, heritage, and patrimony. We envisage a nation that embraces diverse faith communities and a harmonious interaction with each other, a nation that embraces diversity and practices tolerance at all times, and we believe that no man is above another man. Colleagues and friends, I have no doubt that if pursued vigorously, these ambitions are achievable, they are attainable, and our Caribbean civilization deserves them. As I reflect on our elections, our citizens have renewed hope, and we have renewed hope in the consultative process towards development. It reminded us of the benefits to be derived from the inclusion of all citizens, the young and the young at heart, the farmer, the fisherfolk, the student, the artist, the CEO, and the While in our democratic system, the winner takes all, we believe that losers must also be a part of nation-building, and members of parliament and members of the opposition must also be equally served. All must be included. That vision for Grenada is the same vision I share for CARICOM. I view our region through the same lenses. Grenada is willing, ready, and eager to do its part in transforming our beloved Caribbean community. The region belongs to all of us. It is simply home. Our forefathers in nineteen seventy-three envisioned a region with the ability to transform the lives of its people by working together, a community that can overcome its challenges if we, without reservation, dedicate ourselves, our time, and our talents to moving CARICOM forward. In that regard, tomorrow, July fourth, marks the forty-ninth anniversary of the signing of the Treaty of Shagaramis. As we celebrate CARICOM Day, I believe that this is an opportune time for us to pause and reflect on the many experiences we've had while in pursuit of regional integration. Over the last forty-nine years, we have had many moments to celebrate, coupled with moments that required solemn reflection, still while we continue to envision the future. As we look towards the commemoration of our fiftieth anniversary, we need to redouble our efforts to finding solutions to our challenges. Let us not restrict our engagements to the members of our community, but let us with purpose follow the path of the Caribbean Sea, like wise men seeking a brighten star, and engage all countries touched by its warm waters, from Mexico to Venezuela, from Suriname to Haiti. We must also, my friends, bolster support for regional organisations, including the Association of Caribbean States and the community of Latin American and Caribbean States, making CARICOM the centre of enhanced cooperation for our region. The Secretary-General and the Prime Minister of Bahamas has set out some of the challenges we face, from climate change. In my brief interaction with my colleagues, the issue of regional transportation and air travel and sea travel is a major factor, the challenges of COVID nineteen and ongoing future pandemics, food security. We know what those challenges are, and the solutions lie with us. Colleagues, friends, as I conclude, over the last forty-nine years, the resolve of our region has been tested in many ways, but we are still here. We have shown that we are a resilient people who have been able to navigate through turbulent waters, but we are still here. For too long, this Caribbean community that we all love has been seen and viewed as a place where we talk and talk and talk, and then we talk some more. And the question is, to what end? This time, colleagues and friends, and to our young people in particular, and I want to say this because I note the Secretary-General commented that sixty percent of our population is aged thirty and under. Grenada recently elected three members of parliament who are thirty years and under. And I should point it, one of whom is female. All three have been given senior positions in the Cabinet of Grenada, and in particular the female heads, the Climate, Resilience, and Environment Ministry portfolio, as testimony to the importance of that ministry. So I have no doubt that Grenada and the rest of the Caribbean is filled with talented, capable, hard-working young men and women who are prepared to rise to the challenge and to solve and overcome the challenges that we all face. And so I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we collectively move CARICOM forward. And for the record, I am not one of those who are under thirty. Thank you.
Thank you to the Prime Minister of Grenada, the Honourable Deacon Mitchell. May we invite the newly-elected Head of Government, the Prime Minister of St Lucia, the Honourable Philip J Pierre.
Excellency, the President of Suriname, esteemed heads, Secretary-General of the United Nations, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I bring you greetings from the government and people of St Lucia. I speak to you today as one of the newly-elected heads of government, grateful and honoured for the opportunity to address this important body at such a critical time in our collective history. Colleagues, Madam Secretary-General, I am sure you will all agree that there has been no other moment in our post-independence history under whose cloudy skies we are currently seeking shelter, which has challenged our collective existence. We are now experiencing the full brunt of runaway price increases for basic items such as fuel, flour, and bread, compounded by supply chain issues. The Russian-Ukraine war has left the entire world reeling from rising inflation, making life for most households very difficult, more so for the people of our region. I recently had to convene a special meeting of my cabinet to discuss the price of bread in St Lucia. This is how serious and attentive these times have demanded. At this time, Madam Secretary-General, we are still reeling from the effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic, which brought with it business closures, loss of productivity, reduced tourism arrivals, and the reduction in government revenues. The demands on our public health system, which we shouldered to keep our people safe, and the provision of social protection and support measures for vulnerable citizens, have left governments of the region with very little fiscal space to move ahead, to grow their respective economies. And all of this has followed from at least two decades of external shocks, from the slowdowns and security costs, from the September eleven two thousand and one terrorist attack on New York City, and the global wars which followed these attacks, to the impact of the two thousand and eight global financial crisis stemming from the subprime mortgage crisis in the US. Mister Chairman, in between these economic and geopolitical man-made crises, we have had to confront the natural annual cycles of cyclones and hurricanes, a feature of our environment, which in recent years have been more ferocious, destructive, and erratic. In my recent address to the Summit of the Americas, I made the point that while the world only hears of the major weather events because of international television coverage, there are persistent small events brought about by an average rainfall that cause significant damage, often manifested in landslides and flooding, and in the process impose additional severe strain on our island's already limited financial capability. Sadly, Mister Chairman, these destructive weather events are the results of climate change, for which we are not the offenders. So fellow heads, given all these realities, you will appreciate that the euphoria of an election victory vanishes very quickly upon occupying the seat of the Prime Minister, because the challenges that we face as leaders, especially the nuance, upon sober reflection are very apparent, and in a word, daunting. Mister Chairman, notwithstanding these dangerous winds, St Lucia's faith in CARICOM remains strong and unshaken. St Lucia continues to believe in the potential strength and protective shelter that CARICOM can provide. I witnessed firsthand the collective strength of CARICOM during the recent negotiations at the Summit of the Americas earlier this month. I want to assure you that I come to the Prime Ministership of St Lucia in the firm and abiding belief in CARICOM. Mister Chairman, my regional philosophy has been shaped by the small population and size of the country that I lead, but I stand here to affirm that St Lucia will always be less than it can be without CARICOM. Whenever we are faced by external challenges, not of our own making, I'm always guided by the words of the late Prime Minister of Barbados, Owen Affa, that we should face it and fix it. I'm also guided by the warning of our respected colleague and distinguished Prime Ministers at Vancen de Grenadiers, that we shall avoid the reflexive learned helplessness, which arguably stems from our inherited colonial consciousness. So colleagues, I intend to use the responsibility that the people of St Lucia have placed on my shoulder to engage constructively with you and the CARICOM Secretariat, and to join your collective experiences to advance the cause of CARICOM. In this regard, I pledge to engage energetically within CARICOM. We have already signalled our intention to be fully aligned to the Caribbean Court of Justice as the final appellate court in both civil and criminal matters. In this regard, the governor of St Lucia has written to the Privy Council expressing this desire, at whom we have formed a committee led by respected jurists to continue the education of our people on this important issue. We must not allow our enforced circumstances of day-to-day survival to dull our memories of the reasons why our past leaders pursued the establishment of the CARICOM single market economy, and why they saw it as the most optimal answer to the question of what is the next stage of Caribbean development, in light of all the global changes that have taken place in the decades since the initial treaty which established CARICOM. At the centre of the thinking behind the CSME was the need to create the conditions for the free movement of people and capital, and the need to establish a single economy as a unified space for joint growth and development for Caribbean businesses, and more importantly, for the improvement of the quality of life of Caribbean citizens. It should also be recalled that at the centre of the CSME was a recognition that the issues of governance in terms of the functioning of the CARICOM Secretariat had to be reworked to facilitate the implementation of decisions and the day-to-day management of the CSME. Colleagues, it is fair to say that other than the energies which have gone to the pursuit of the single economy at the OECD level, and the establishment of the Caribbean Court of Justice at the wider CARICOM level, we have not seen the kind of advances towards the CSME within CARICOM as we had hoped. As we continue to face the new and emerging challenges of food shortages, the rising cost of basic foodstuffs, climate change, youth unemployment, gun violence and crime, and other social challenges, I urge that we reframe our responses within the framework of the CSME. I also urge that we encourage a thorough inventory of the work of the various CSME working groups, so that we can reassess where we are and what is to be done to move the regional economic and political unification process forward. Alongside these assessments, St Lucia pledges to work within the OECD to advance the unification process within the sub-region. Colleagues, colleague heads, St Lucia believes that without concrete technical action in response to the challenges that we face, we will see a deepening of the crisis, and we will have no one but ourselves to blame for not devising the appropriate responses. We have complained for too long about the need for special and differential treatment given our vulnerabilities as since. We have demanded too often that our graduation into middle-income status should not be used as a basis for denying us to concessional financing reserves for the world's poorest and most highly indebted countries. We have made our voices heard loudly and clearly on the need for our climate vulnerabilities to be included in the global commitments to the financing for climate change, adaptation, and recovery. For all these reasons, St Lucia is pleased and fully supportive of the efforts by the Caribbean Development Bank to develop a new economic model as a means of measuring national income, the resilience Eurasian adjuster. We are fully cognisant of the need for such new tools to allow us to access the development finance and debt forgiveness, since most of our debt have been accumulated result of factors beyond our control, like climate change, wars, global financial crises, and global pandemics. We urge and encourage our regional technocrats, CARICOM included, not only to develop these new tools, but to undertake the necessary negotiations to convince international financial institutions of the need to adopt these new measurements in the evaluation of the economies of CARICOM states. Our regional technocrats and intellectuals must continue to reevaluate and refine the models being used to assess our economic and social progress, and should be prepared to spend more time in gaining greater insights into the nature of the region's challenges and in the development of models that are better able to assist us in advancing our countries economically and socially. This region has the intellectual wherewithal to devise new and innovative models and strategies for our economic development. Colleagues, there can be no meaningful integration without free movement of people, and so we must move swiftly to create a lasting, reliable, and affordable regional transportation infrastructure. We have allowed our discussions on Caribbean Sea and air transport to be guided too much by external market forces rather than by the transportation needs of the people and the businesses of our region. In doing so, we have not only closed our air and sea spaces for business expansion and we have not only closed our air and sea spaces for business expansion and growth for our local investors, but we have also surrendered the future of our unification projects to the whims of service providers whose only interest is profit. To put it directly, colleagues, CARICOM needs Liat, or CARICOM needs a better version of Liat. Unless one of our island-owned carriers emerges as a truly regional carrier, not only in terms of countries covered, but with a philosophical commitment to making regionalism work for CARICOM citizens, then our regional aspirations will continue to be an elusive dream. In this regard, I wish to commend our antigone colleague, Prime Minister Gaston Brown, for his efforts in keeping Liat alive. Saint Lucia therefore stands willing to work with CARICOM to find solutions to our regional transportation challenges and will assist in any effort designed to finding a lasting, reliable, and sustainable airline or consortium of airlines to service the region. Saint Lucia will also be interested in a ferry offering scenic and comfortable service to utilize the potential of our sea routes as an additional attraction and transportation option for visitors and citizens alike. Saint Lucia is committed to any effort by CARICOM to find a willing aviation investor to offer dedicated airline services between Africa and the Caribbean. Colleagues, there can be no CARICOM future if the young people of our region continue to wallow in despair, dash expectations, and with crime and gun violence as their most available option. In Saint Lucia, I've made the development of a youth economy one of my most important pillars for my developmental plan for the country. I say this not only as an economic imperative, but a moral one. In Saint Lucia, we are determined to create a special space for youth entrepreneurship and business growth within the general economic system. In that space, they will be provided with state resources to help them convert hobbies into entrepreneurship and skills into business through finance and marketing support, training, and mentorship, thus creating sustainable livelihoods and a new cadre of indigenous business people. A dedicated agency that is agile, flexible, and responsive is being created to drive this policy. I stand ready to work with CARICOM to see how we can organically link our development of the youth economy within the existing CSME and then the economic and social development mechanisms within CARICOM. Colleagues, our integration will remain continually weakened if we allow the basic principles which has defined our relations to the outside world to be compromised by the foreign policies of other countries. CARICOM is strongest when it holds steadfast to the traditional principles of the right to self-determination of our countries, non-interference in internal affairs of sovereign nations, that safeguarding the Caribbean region as a zone of peace and the pursuit of south-south cooperation. Saint Lucia declares its readiness to defend and uphold the principles which are in conformity with the freedom and dignity of the Caribbean people, respect for the internal sovereignty of our neighbours, and in pursuit of a foreign policy framework that allows it to tap into the developmental potential from regional friends while avoiding making enemies with our longstanding global allies. Saint Lucia believes that a free, sovereign, and economically stable Cuba, Venezuela, and Haiti can only mean a free, sovereign, and economically stable CARICOM. Colleagues, when I was elected as Prime Minister of Saint Lucia, I came in on a promise to be transparent, to be a listener, to be democratic, and to practice as much as possible the principles of servant leadership. I have pledged to be guided by the principles of humility, transparency, accountability, inclusiveness, and fairness to all, and to put the development of people above everything else. I pledge to use my best efforts to eradicate corruption at all levels. Colleagues, as it is for my domestic political life in Saint Lucia, so I believe it should be for CARICOM. As we strengthen our democracies forty to sixty years after independence, let us all commit ourselves to the principles of good governance, constitutional reform, transparency, and accountability. And let us strive to make this region the freest, most democratic, and best governed part of the universe, all in the interest of the people of the region we have been called to serve. My expectations and dreams as a new Prime Minister in CARICOM are for the attainment of genuine togetherness and integration of our foreign and economic policies. My dream is for flexible and agile CARICOM, serving the day-to-day needs of our people and enhancing the faith in our collective destiny. My dream is for CARICOM that never forgets that the only reason why we have committed ourselves to public life is to serve the people, and so we must put the people first in all that we do. I would like to close with some borrowed words of wisdom. They are the words of 1987 Nobel winner for peace Oscar Sanchez of Costa Rica, and I quote, "Hope is the strongest driving force for people. Hope which brings about change, which produces new realities, is what opens man's road to freedom." My friends, let us be honest and acknowledge that CARICOM's image throughout our region needs to improve. That must change, and change now. Too much time has already been lost. We must begin that vital change by being the change the people have for a very long time been crying for. We must not only talk unity, we must demonstrate to our people that we are together, confronted by similar problems that can be resolved only by a united CARICOM. I thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister of Saint Lucia, Honorable Philip J. Pierre.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have all seen the statues in our entry hallway when you arrived, right? Did anybody see them? Did you like them? Well, we have a surprise for you, and it's coming your way right now, because prepare for them to come alive. Now, wasn't that spectacular? I'm sorry. I have to ask for another round of applause for the dancers, for the statues that came to life tonight. And now, my partner in crime will announce our next speaker.
And while the stage is being recreated for the next remark, we would like to invite for the remarks the Secretary General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Gutiérrez.
Distinguished heads of state and government, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, all protocol observed. Good evening, bonsoir. It is my great honour to join the forty-third regular meeting of the CARICOM conference. Thank you to the people of this beautiful country for welcoming us. President Santoki, like CARICOM itself, Suriname is an example of unity in diversity. Your national anthem beautifully exemplifies a melding of cultures and this country's diverse roots. As the distinguished Prime Minister of Bahamas has said, quoting also the anthem, "Wherever our ancestors came from, we should take care of our country." A very beautiful and meaningful sentence. And this is precisely what you are doing. I salute the government's ambitious goal of preserving its ninety-three percent rainforest cover. I saw this for myself when I flew over Suriname's magnificent rainforest and visit these country's less well-known but incredible mangroves. Rich in diversity, uniting land and sea, and protecting fragile coastal ecosystems, mangroves are a fitting symbol of Caribbean nations facing challenges, seizing opportunities, preserving natural gifts. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, this year's CARICOM summit comes at a moment of maximum peril for people and planet alike. The COVID-19 pandemic has devastated lives and livelihoods across the region and exposed deep structural fragilities. Health systems underfunded, understaffed, and re-equipped, itard by a brain drain of Caribbean medical and health professionals. Your tourism industry is struggling to recover from the loss of billions of dollars in revenue. And average Caribbean growth is expected to reach just forty-seven percent this year, much less than what the true recovery would require if resources would have been made available to your countries. In flows of foreign direct investment declined by a staggering seventy-four point five percent last year. And many of your countries are unable to access debt relief or concessional finance to spur recovery and invest in your people and the systems they need. You are victims of the myth that middle-income countries do not need concessional financial support, a need that completely disregards vulnerability to external shocks. Russia's invasion of Ukraine has aggravated these challenges and is coming on top of high levels of poverty and unemployment and inequality, and the difficulties that come with importing more than eighty percent of foods and being net importers of fuel. At the same time, the lack of economic opportunities is amplifying existing challenges. And against this backdrop, the small islands and low-lying coastal states of the Caribbean are especially vulnerable to what is perhaps the biggest challenge facing our world today, the climate crisis. And the Caribbean is ground zero for the global climate emergency. Excellencies, across all these areas, we need to gather around bold solutions. And allow me to highlight three dimensions. First, we need climate action that matches the scale and urgency of the crisis. That means urgent and transformative emissions That means urgent and transformative emissions reduction efforts to halt warming at 1.5 degrees Celsius, support for adaptation from climate impacts and financial assistance to secure the climate resilient future. We have no time to lose. I thank Caribbean leaders for helping to show the way. I'm inspired by your many efforts to safeguard your incredible biodiversity and natural gifts, including by the efforts of the indigenous communities. But more ambition and climate change are needed by all, especially the G20, who account for 80% of global emissions. And war in Ukraine cannot lead to a short-sighted decision, group of decisions that shut the door on 1.5 degrees Celsius. With the commitments presently registered, emissions are still predicted to grow by 14% through 2030. This is simply collective suicide, and it must be reversed to keep the 1.5-degree goal alive. Developed countries must lead the way to adjust an equitable renewables revolution and provide developing countries with much-needed finance and technology. And adaptation and climate finance also require urgent and transformative progress. Wealthy countries must finally make good on 100 billion climate finance commitment to developing countries starting this year. It was promised for 2020, it didn't happen in 2021, and it might not happen if a huge effort is not made now for 2022. And we also need clarity in 2022 on the Glasgow Commitment to Double Adaptation Finance, as well as ensuring your eligibility and access to that finance. Partners must drive changes at the multilateral development banks to facilitate your transition to renewable energy and climate resilient future. And it's time for a frank discussion and space for decision-making regarding the loss and damage that your countries are already experiencing. At the same time, one third of the world remains without early warning systems that save lives and livelihoods. I've asked the World Meteorological Organisation to mobilise a plan to ensure universal coverage within the next five years. All these steps and more are vital to tackling the existential climate crisis. Second, we need a reform of the morally bankrupt global financial system and spur sustainable recovery across the region. Developing countries need access to financing at low or low costs, as well as debt relief and restructuring. On the debt side, we need immediate relief for developing countries whose debt is about to become due. This includes renewing the debt services special initiative, pushing back maturities for two to five years and suspending all IMF surcharges during this period. But that does not replace the need for an effective debt relief framework, including vulnerable middle-income countries. And let's be clear, the framework that was approved by the G20 simply does not work. In the longer term, efforts are also needed to create sovereign debt workout mechanisms that can significantly reduce the disproportionate burden placed on developing countries while bringing all creditors to the table. For example, the Economic Commission for Latin America and the Caribbean is pursuing liability management strategies to bring creditors and debtors together to extend debt repayment periods while reducing interest costs. Innovative approaches, such as the integration of disaster clauses into debt contracts, already adopted by countries like Barbados, should also be scaled up to ensure that countries receive immediate debt standstill in times of future shocks. I also would like to underline the recent development by Jamaica of catastrophe bonds. Countries also need access to new financing. And this requires immediately re-channeling all unused special drawing rights, including into regional development banks with the right expertise, such as the Inter-American Development Bank, to support developing countries. Efforts are also needed to lower the cost of borrowing while helping countries leverage affordable finance through public-private partnerships. And in this regard, I fully support the creation of a Caribbean resilience fund. More broadly, we need to reform the international financial system to lay the groundwork for a new architecture that can better respond and prevent massive vulnerability to external shocks and ensure that financing goes where it's needed most. And I want to reassure the Prime Minister of Barbados that the UN will be fully supporting the initiative that you are taking this summer in this regard. It's also high time to move beyond the financial system's preoccupation with per capita income as a sole measure of a country's economic strength. That is why I strongly support the establishment of a multi-dimensional vulnerability index that takes into account all the challenges and circumstances that factor into determining access to concessional support. For your countries, this would mean ensuring that the complex and interdependent factors of debt and climate change impact are captured in an eligibility analysis for debt relief and financing. Clearly, our old metrics have failed us. It is time to change them. Third, we must keep up our fight against the COVID-19 pandemic. We are not out of the woods yet. We need governments, global and regional organisations, and pharmaceutical companies working better together to deliver and especially to create conditions for the local production of tests, vaccines and treatments. There are important initiatives taking place in Africa today with new vaccine units, production units in South Africa, Rwanda and Senegal. And we need to continue working closely together to stop the spread of the virus across the Caribbean through proven public health measures and prepare for future pandemics through bold investments in preparedness and training. We must never be caught unprepared again. Excellencies, across all these areas, the United Nations Country Office, field teams and agencies proudly stand with your countries, together also with ECCLAC. We are working with communities to bolster security, spur development and strengthen national institutions that are inclusive, firmly anchored in human rights and the rule of law. And we are with you to help develop policies and laws that protect minorities, migrants, refugees and women and girls. And we are honoured to support communities during these times of disaster and crises. As we look ahead, I pledge my full support and my enthusiastic commitment as this region builds a brighter and more sustainable and peaceful future for the people of your region and to the benefit of the whole world. Thank you very much.
And we thank we thank the Secretary General of the United Nations and for his words in recognition of the global issues that our respective nations are facing and of course, the necessity to address them.
We would like to invite the outgoing Chair of the CARICOM, the Prime Minister of Belize, the Right Honourable Johnny Briseño.
I guess you're trying to make me feel as young as Deacon Ong. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. And as always, it's such a pleasure to be among all of you, especially for our Caribbean community, for the third regular meeting of our conference. I wish to record my delegation's deep appreciation for the wonderful Surinamese hospitality and the excellent arrangements in place for our meeting. President Santoki, your wife and your team have done an excellent job. Thank you so much. I also wish to welcome the Honourable Deacon Mitchell, the newly-elected Prime Minister of Grenada, to his first meeting of the conference. And I'm sure that he will bring a fresh perspective and enrich our deliberations. But my best friend on election night, when we won, gave me this good counsel, and I want to share it with you. He said, you know, he said, enjoy the victory right now. Because starting tomorrow, 75% of the time, somebody are happy and somebody are upset with the decision you make. And I made the mistake to say, so what about the next 25%? So the next 25%, everybody will fix with you. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, when I assumed the chairmanship of CARICOM last January, we were hopeful that we were approaching the end of the acute phase of the COVID-19 pandemic. All forecasts were that an economic recovery was on the horizon. ECCLAC predicted 7.8% growth for the Caribbean. Travel was resuming, our tourism industries were reopening, our citizens were returning to work and our children back to school. Alas, as my chairmanship expires, COVID-19 continues, climate changes and conflict rages. Our collective response to the dual emergencies of the climate and the pandemic was shattered on the 24th February, when Russia invaded Ukraine. The emergent food, energy and financial crisis are immediate and direct in their impact on our most vulnerable populations. And yes, I agree that we also in Belize have spent many times in cabinet talking about the price of bread and how we can keep it down, or the price of fuel. The Minister of State and Finances told me last night that taxes on fuel are just on the pennies right now. And that is one of the most, our biggest revenue earner. And like us in Belize, pretty much all of us in the Caribbean are dealing with those pressing matters on us every single day. What has it become? Crisis governance is the new normal. Excellencies, the geopolitical landscape continues to be redefined. It took the war in Ukraine for the G7 to promote their partnership for global infrastructure and investment. A promise of some $600 billion for infrastructure and development in low and middle-income countries. This is an alternative to China's Belt and Road Initiative. New military establishments are being built in our region. These can become flashpoints. We must continue to strongly advocate for and ensure that the Caribbean remains a zone of peace. It is vital that we ensure that as small developing states, that we are not sidelined as powerful states and actors recalibrate their priorities and refashion their alliances. Despite the unprecedented challenges and as we approach our 50th anniversary, I leave the chairmanship optimistic about the future of CARICOM integration. Optimistic because I have no doubt about our solidarity and unity of purpose. Our conference is of one mind about the nature and scale of the challenges our region faces. Whilst we do not have a unanimity on every single issue, we have been united on the most consequential issues, including climate change action, access to financing and equitable access to vaccines. Our engagements are always frank, constructive and respectful. We should never take this for granted. I am also optimistic because our conference has been able to effectively exert strong and influential leadership at a global level. We should be proud. CARICOM's leadership on climate and access to finance is well-recognised and is starting to bear fruit. We have a standing invitation from the G20 Presidency of Indonesia to participate in their work, which is now extended to Suriname as the incoming Chair. The IMF's new resilience and sustainability trust, not without its imperfection, is a direct response to our advocacy. The finalisation of the Multi-Dimensional Vulnerability Index is within sight. And thank you so much, Secretary General of the United Nations, Antonio Guterres, for that work that you have been doing. And of course, we can't forget our own Mia Motley for doing her absolute best on that part. Over the last six months, we have had two high-level engagements with the United States. We have reset our relations and refocused our Caribbean-US partnership on the critical challenges of climate action, security, energy transition and access to finance. Last month, at the Summit of the Americas, the US announced its partnership to address climate change, which aligns with many of our priorities and opens a new chapter in the US-CARICOM relations. The stage is set for a summit with Canada, a longstanding development partner of ours. With Canada, we must do more. Our community has also re-engaged with Central America in full recognition of the inevitability of interregional cooperation owing to our geographic proximity and shared challenges. We must build on this alliance with urgency and purpose. Later this year, we will celebrate the 50th anniversary of diplomatic relations between Cuba and CARICOM countries. This historic milestone calls for a dedicated effort by us to bring an end to the illegal blockage imposed on Cuba, which has been in place for 70 years. Fuel prices have been too high for too long. We in the Caribbean call for the immediate lifting of the sanction imposed on Venezuela so that the revolutionary Petrocaribe programme can be restated, providing our economies with much-needed relief. I am optimistic because the first steps are being taken for concrete action on improving community governance. The task of reforming our community and secretariat must be urgently completed. I commend the Secretary General for the preliminary ideas, many of which are practical and doable. In agriculture, we are moving rapidly to dismantle barriers to interregional agricultural trade and to stimulate the investment needed to strengthen the regional food system. The targets set in our 25 by 25 Plan are within reach. If we can deliver affordable, regionally-produced food for our people, it will strengthen their faith in our integration efforts. When we met in Belize, we agreed to take a deliberate approach to industrial development in our region. A sound industrial policy will contribute to building economic resilience, improving competitiveness, attracting investment and unleashing the potential of regional entrepreneurship. and unleashing the potential of regional entrepreneurship and MSMEs. In short, bringing to life the CSME for all levels of society so that the benefits of integration can be experienced in the daily lives of our citizens. Definitive steps are also being taken to accelerate the regional digital transformation through the adaptation of action plans for fast-shocking digital transformation for Girls in ICT Partnership and for the CARICOM Digital Skills Task Force. We have also finalized the reduction of roaming charges in the region. While the pandemic has underscored the necessity of digitization, the recovery is an opportunity to catalyze the digitization of the economy, government services, and social sectors so that the region is well-positioned, not just for the future, but for the present. The agricultural revolution, industrial development, and the digital agenda are interlinked and will contribute to deepening integration and building economic resilience at a time when the global economy is experiencing fragmentation. I am optimistic because we are on the right track. We are in fact converting our words into action, but we need to move with haste because the clouds on the horizon continue to darken. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, geopolitical tensions are driving a realignment of the international order. We are seeing attempts to forge a global democratic alliance to counter the irreversible movement towards a multipolar world. We are witnessing flagrant violations of international law with impunity. We are experiencing the weaponization of economic and financial interdependence. We are seeing a counterintuitive unwillingness to cooperate, to protect the global commons. The war in Ukraine has unleashed an economic war in which our countries are collateral damage. The food crisis, already brewing as a result of climate change, has rapidly worsened. Rising oil and fertilizer prices, inflationary pressures, and an interlinked financial crisis combined to dim any hope of a robust economic recovery and threaten the social fabric of our societies. It is in this context that we have a duty, an obligation, to keep global attention focused on the climate emergency, which is an existential issue for the Caribbean, but also according to the IPCC, a code red for all humanity. Nothing positive has happened since Glasgow. There have been no new commitments to raise ambitions on reducing emissions. There have been no new commitments to deliver finance. No progress on adaptation nor loss and damage. Increasing temperatures, changing rainfall patterns, and more frequent extreme climate events and decimating agriculture, harvest, and disrupting food supply chains. Urgent investments and utilization of agricultural adaptation and mitigation measures, including insurance, improved storage, climate-resistant crops, adoption of new technologies, can contribute to more resilient food systems. Similarly, accelerating transition to renewable and clean energy, the sources of which are varied and abundant in the region, are at the center of the solution to climate change. Energy accounts for over two-thirds of global greenhouse gas emissions. The current energy crisis exposes how much more needs to be done. But this must not mean that we in the Caribbean should not be allowed to exploit our resources responsibly on behalf of our people. And of course, access to development financing is crucial if our states are to finance our recovery and invest in resilience. The finalization and use of the MVI and the mainstreaming of debt relief instruments are among many readily deployable tools to ensure access to development financing for vulnerable countries. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, our climate agenda is not an addition or in competition with the geopolitical crisis and priorities. Our climate agenda is a direct response to the food, energy, and financial crisis. Let me close by thanking Secretary General and the Secretariat for their support and guidance over the last six months. I also wish to thank my colleagues, my colleagues' heads, for their cooperation, advice, and friendship during my tenure. I was a new kid in the block when I was also selected as this chairman back then. It feels so long. And now it is turned out to leave and to turn it over to my good friend, President Santoki of Suriname, the chairmanship of the conference. I have every confidence, my friend, that you are going to do an excellent job. And I promise you, I wish you a successful term, and I promise you my full support. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you to the outgoing Chair of the CARICOM, the Right Honourable John Bracino. Now, I would like to ask for your attention for an amazing video you're about to witness about all of your countries.
As individual nations, we have a lot to offer, but as a community, so much more. May we now invite the incumbent Chair of the CARICOM to the podium with remarks, the President of the Republic of Suriname,
Thank you very much, the two masters of ceremony. Folks, good evening. And I saw the seriousness on the face of all of you, but also the excitement when you were observing the video of all the Caribbean countries. And I was listening also to the remarks, silent remarks, the body language, and that most of the people over here, they have decided already which country will be the next destination, the next holiday, and that will be the country where they will get to a higher level. I was listening to some of the heads, and they were asking if the Prime Minister of South Africa had brought also some present from his country. Welcome, distinguished colleague heads, distinguished Secretary General of the United Nations, Antonio Guterres, distinguished Secretary General of CARICOM, Carla Mnet, the Secretary General of the OUI CPS, George Rebelo Pinto Chikoti, the Secretary General of the ACS, Rodolfo Sabonche, heads of regional institutions, spouses of the heads, distinguished ministers, members of the Diplomatic Council and Consular Council, representatives of international organizations, distinguished delegates, people of the Caribbean community. Good afternoon, brothers and sisters of the Caribbean region. It is my honor to welcome you all to the Paramaribo as the head of the Republic of Suriname, also known as the hidden family of South America, my brother Juan Bigi Odi. And that was just welcoming you and expressing my greetings on behalf of the people of Suriname in the Dutch language and also in the Surinamese language, Saranang. Ladies and gentlemen, Suriname is honored to host the 43rd regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. Since becoming President in July 2020, I have attended CARICOM Heads Meeting, where we discussed various issues. And some questions were raised in my mind. As a newcomer from Suriname, a bit of an outlier as Suriname is a Dutch-speaking country in the Caribbean community. And we are the most eastern CARICOM member state located on the continent of South America. And we are the only CARICOM member state with a border with the European Union, French Ghana. Suriname is a multilingual, multicultural, multi-religious, and multi-ethnic mosaic of people from around the world, which you have just seen on the screen and also when you were welcomed. Suriname is also the smallest country on the continent with almost 93% forest cover and a low deforestation rate, and one of the only three carbon-negative countries in the world. While you not have the chance to experience all Suriname has to offer due to the official business, we have to conduct for the following these, and I offer you your overwhelming hospitality on behalf of the Surinamese people. However, you're welcome to return at your leisure to spend more time with us, relax in the beautiful Amazonian rainforest, and learn about our different cultures, cuisine, and languages, to do business and also to invest. And in that context, it is my pleasure to inform you, since the 1st of July, a couple of days ago, my government had introduced for all nationalities in the world a visa-free traveling to Suriname for tourism purposes, family visit, and business. So I'm inviting you all to come to Suriname. You're just getting awake somewhere in the world and looking for a country where you can relax. Well, the same day, you can catch an airplane and come to Suriname and enjoy the beauty of my country. And this is to promote tourism and also the business in my country. This measure, however, can generate spin-off for tourism in the region and also means more challenges and cooperation of the community's security and law enforcement bodies. However, ladies and gentlemen, we have to bring also tribute to persons who have left their legacy behind forests. And that's why I'm asking you to take a moment, to pause for a minute of silence to remember those within the Caribbean community who passed away since the last time we formally met. And in particular, we pay homage to an order of the Caribbean community over the Honorable George Leving. And I'm asking you, please to stand and let us take one minute silence for him and for the respect of his legacy. Thank you, may be seated. I applaud the outgoing Chair of Caricom, the Honorable John Brissinio, Prime Minister of Belize, for his leadership of the community for the last six months. John Brissinio, your guidance and efforts on behalf of the region as Chairman benefited the community. Please allow me to also formally bid a warm welcome to the recently elected leaders in the community since the last regular conference, namely the Honorable Philip Davis, Prime Minister of Commonwealth of Bahamas, the Honorable Dickon Mitchell, the Young Prime Minister of Grenada, and the Honorable Philip Pierre, Prime Minister of Saint Lucia. Ladies and gentlemen, while preparing the statement, some questions came to my mind. And I looked at the region's developments, the world's challenges, the character of the Caricom, and also the member states. And there are a few notable things that I am observing. We recognize that we are in a peace zone. We recognize that our strength lies in unity. And if we are united, we can wield a more substantial influence and decide to influence. Our strength is also in diversity. We are island states, a stage on the mainland, and one member state state lies in the narrow strip of land connecting North and South America. We excel in tourist friendliness. We also share several threats such as low coastline, the adverse effects of global warming and climate change. And when we develop strategies, we have to base them on this, base them on our reality. Since its start, Caricom has had ambitious goals, to create a common market, cooperate in foreign policy matters, and promote functional cooperation in various areas vital to social and economic development. We have moreover taken many steps to deepen and widen the integration process. However, heads, leaders, ladies and gentlemen, the reality is that we are not yet sufficiently cooperating. The reality is that we still have differences in opinion on issues. The reality is that we have everything to support each other in the economy, single market, movement of goods and persons, and connectivity. But the processes to facilitate this are going very slowly. Despite progress in some areas of regional cooperation, we are still far from achieving the stated goals. We are now here in Suriname with a new chairperson and a new conference, and I reflected on how this conference can make the difference to start important changes. Important to us as member states, but also as a collectivity. These changes have already been mentioned in various meetings, and I will name a few. One, the fact that we have 15 votes, yes, indeed, on our own small votes, but together we have a strong voice that we can use to promote unity, initiate dialogue, facilitate intra-regional cooperation, and joint efforts by Caricom Enterprises. Two, we offer different types of tourism, from beach tourism to eco-tourism, from beautiful mountains to waterfalls and rapids, from urbanized areas to areas of indigenous and tribal living, from modern cities to historic sites. As you just saw, the Caribbean has an astonishing natural beauty to offer tourists combined with Caribbean friendliness, hospitality, unmatched culinary diversity. If we work together, we can create a tourism product that will allow tourists an optimal Caribbean experience from the east with tropical rainforest to the west with the most extensive reef in our hemisphere. Three, although the island regions do not have abundant fertile land, they have human capital and they have financial capital with joint investment. And by utilizing modern technology, we can guarantee food security for the Caribbean and the region. And we must see this also against the background of the invasion in Ukraine and the impact of the war to the food security. An invasion we condemn, and we call for an end to this aggression. The agribusiness strategy on the portfolio of Guyana is an excellent example of a region-wide initiative for food security. Four, security is costing our countries individually a lot. Security is critical use in our communities. Our territorial and maritime zones cover a vast area. It's very difficult for individual states to have a total control on your area, your continent, your maritime zone. But if we work together, we can guarantee security. We can consider, for example, joint satellite monitoring system, joint coastguard control, and together tackle illegality in a comprehensive manner. Five, we must promote public-private partnership based on build, operate, transfer within the Caricom. The government should facilitate, the private sector takes the lead, and weak others realize cargo flights, ferry services to promote connectivity among member states. Six, offshore oil and gas is new for Suriname and Guyana, but the whole of Caricom can benefit from it. And I said it, and I repeat what I've said, and that is what has been said on the Energy, Oil, and Gas Summit, which was held in Suriname last week. I welcome my Caribbean sisters and brothers to benefit from our resources and invite them to invest and contribute as contractors and subcontractors in Suriname. All you have to do, register your business at your Chamber, at our Chamber of Commerce, and partner with a Surinamese company to become a local content. And I'm inviting you all to come and make good use of this opportunity. Seven, the challenge of labor shortage in our Caribbean region is another example. Making labor available, not only skilled labor, but non-skilled for agriculture, manufacturing, and services jointly, collectively, we can find a solution and help our citizens to find a good future within the Caribbean. Eight, also in the field of making land available for agribusiness, for joint Caricom Enterprises, or collective investments, for example, in the gold business in Suriname, those are the opportunities. Nine, in the area of climate change, we can achieve much more together and access the adaptation finance we urgently need as well as speak with one voice on the issue of loss and damage. Colleagues, those are some of the examples, very pragmatically, how we can strengthen the cooperation and integration and create opportunities to make the Caribbean stronger. We find ourselves as a crossroads, and this is the moment to reassess, to refocus, and recommit our endeavors to ensure sustainable development and prosperity for the people of the region, ultimately aimed at leaving no one behind. But we require leadership and willingness to go for broad cooperation, to go for a creative approach, to go for innovation in our approach for new strategies, to go for private sector involvement, and to go for the participation of the youth. That is why we are here, and perhaps we'll speak in the future of the Caricom Federation. You never know, maybe. Look at how we shine in sports, soccer, athletes, and swimming, and then cricket. We already have a West Indies team. Let us make a Caricom team in all areas to reach the top. Ladies and gentlemen, the presence in our midst of the Secretary's General of the United Nations, the Organization of African Caribbean and Pacific States, as well as the Association of Caribbean States is evidence of the strategic relevance of multilateralism. As small developing states, the countries of the Caribbean are not part of influential global discussions and norm-setting mechanisms such as the G20 or international financial institutions as IMF, IDB, and the World Bank. Yet, policies adopted by these mechanisms impact our countries' small and fragile economies. Policies regarding de-risking and correspondent banking, blacklisting, and unrealistic classification as middle-income countries, to name a few, are a stark reminder that we need an effective system of multilateralism. A system that not only provides an opportunity to make statements and address issues, but a system where all countries, large and small, have a level playing field. The Caricom economies are facing challenges in the current geopolitical environment. With rising inflation expectations, we have already noticed a notable widening of credit spreads for frontier economies. Therefore, the government of Suriname is looking for opportunities to attract private capital to Caricom and is proposing the establishment of a Caricom Private Equity Fund to support Caricom Enterprises. The Caricom should facilitate partners to set up private equity and debt funds in the region to bolster employment and growth. I expect these prominent leaders in our midst to use their influence to make a difference. Action is required now, Secretary Generals. Our countries, as small island developing and low-lying coastal states, are experiencing the fury of changing climate patterns now. The hurricane seasons has just started with the unpredictability of severe weather's event for many islands. Excessive rainfall in the coastal areas of Suriname and Guyana caused massive flooding, displacement of thousands of people, and destruction of property and livelihoods. Indeed, these events serve to underscore the vulnerability of the region. We must advocate for a climate vulnerability index at a global level. Equally important is access to affordable climate finance in support of our mitigation and adaptation efforts. We recently gathered at the Ninth Summit of the Americas in Los Angeles, where we met with Vice President Kamala Harris and President Joe Biden during bilateral meetings. And in that context, we welcome the partnership to address the Climate Crisis 2030, PAC 2030, which will address energy security, climate crisis, and finance in our region. And there are arrangements for follow-up meetings within the framework of this joint cooperation between Caricom and the United States of America. We have spoken enough, as mentioned before. It is time for action to gather stronger. Distinguished guests, I was honored and privileged to have the opportunity recently. I was honored and privileged to have the opportunity recently to interact with youth representatives as Lead Head of Youth Development within the QSI Cabinet of CARICOM. And it was an inspiring conversation with many insightful comments from youth across the region. Be assured that I will make all efforts during this regional leadership position and beyond to champion integrated youth development as the foundation to build anything future-driven. The future of CARICOM depends on how we, as heads of government, are willing to facilitate this current generation of youth through inclusive, bold, and creative leadership. Our young people have a unique and vital perception of matters, an inspiring drive and motivation to pursue determined goals while overcoming challenges. And I also intend during this chairmanship to advance the contours of the Caribbean industrial policy. And I have addressed the young people already, and I offer, as President of Suriname, ten hectares of land to the young people of the Caribbean to set up their campus, to do the study on biodiversity, modern technology, but also other studies that should contribute to protect our nations against the climate crisis. And I'm very proud to see one young leader from Grenada entering the stage of heads of government. Welcome, my brother, and hopefully I'm the Chairperson of the QSI Cabinet, including the portfolio of youth, and inviting to develop this youth policy together with me for the Caribbean region. Ladies and gentlemen, as regard to industrial policy, we have established a national working group to provide the perspective. And during our heads of conference meeting, we will present also the first design, the draft, of how we think that industrial policy can be initiated, can be developed, can be promoted in close cooperation with all of you leaders. Ladies and gentlemen, the true Caribbean spirit. Athletes of eight member states participated yesterday in the 50th Annual CARICOM 10K Road Race under a team. A healthy Caribbean on a healthy planet. And I wish to congratulate all participants and winners of the 10K. And I'm pleased, and I'm pleased that we could compete again after an inactive period for supporters across the region and the world due to the COVID-19 pandemic. After all, professional supporters need these moments to match their talents with others and improve their skills. We must remember that non-communicable diseases are one of the most significant health threats in our region. And addressing the prevention and control of non-communicable diseases will not succeed until healthy behavior are established at a young age. This means ensuring a health-enabling environment where sports are a gateway to physical activity and healthy lifestyles. And as a contribution from the heads in promoting a healthy Caribbean, I'm inviting all colleagues, all the people, all the ministers, for a sportive 1K walk tomorrow morning, 4th of July, at 7 o'clock. And I'll wait for you, and you will get the spot where we will gather to start with this healthy walk in the morning. The 50th anniversary, as mentioned, of the Caribbean community next year should therefore serve as an opportunity to reflect on how far we have come as a community in implementing the ideals of the first leaders in 1973. Have we, as a region, advanced functional cooperation and increased coordination of policies to benefit our people? Were we able to effectively facilitate intra-regional trade and work towards removing barriers? Did we implement policies to facilitate the free movement of persons and goods? And has CARICOM served the development goals of its members? Indeed, for one of the oldest integration bodies in the Western Hemisphere, we and the community need to undertake this assessment. And through Caribbean fashion, we cannot only reflect, but also have to celebrate our many achievements. Moreover, we have to include our people, our Caribbean people, in the celebration. And I therefore look forward to receive your proposals for a worthy commemoration of our 50th anniversary of CARICOM next year. We'll have the festive kickoff during this 43rd regular meeting of the conference. Heads of government will be invited to plant a tree in the botanical garden, symbolizing sustainability in terms of the continued progress of the community, as well as care for the planet and our health. Colleague heads, Secretary General Antoni Gutierrez, Secretary General Carla Burnett, ladies and gentlemen, as we prepare for our deliberations for the next two days, let us remain mindful of the importance of solidarity and the spirit of a community when we address the issues on our agenda. After all, we should be united in our purpose to advance sustainable development for our region's country while ensuring that no one is left behind. I wish you fruitful meeting, and I thank you all, and may God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Excellency, Mr. President of Republic of Suriname, Shandry Kapasat Santoki, for your remarks as incumbent Chair of the CARICOM.
Now, I know what everybody's thinking. When can we get to the food and the drinks and the good part, right? We're almost nearing the end, so bear with us, we have a few short items left. And the next of those is a nice spoken word.
Good evening. The mic won't be obstinate. Good evening. Welcome to all excellencies, all distinguished guests, all friends. Welcome to my sweet country, Suriname. It's an honor and a pleasure, and this is for you all. Knowing that great ancestry surrounds us is key, because it's not I alone, you see? It is the I in you, in us, we. A nation, a people, a beat, a feel, we. Bloodlines and storylines intertwined in us. With a strength of culture echoing in that one-of-a-kind collective memory that makes we. A staccato symphony reminding us that we are more than reggae, kaseko, soca, and chotney. Being Caribbean is being. A people of diverse and beaming light. With in culture, strength, making us paradise. If only we would realize. A nation, a people, a beat, a feel, we. Now here, and we know this place, even in these serious times, where sun are bright, where sun bright, but things not right. River flood, prices up, and mindset, mindset in a rush. Know that we are surrounded by ancestry. A Haitian proverb says, "The nights are long, but our dreams last longer." Reminding us not to dwell on dark pages. Don't dwell on dark pages. But to dance to the rhythm of self-made future, creating our ability to shine our own light. So let's not falter in the fallness of ego. Let us reach for our indigo skies and find strength in the thickness of our roots that makes we, yes, 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 we. We, we are the pledge, we are the secret still needs to be revealed, we are the commitment to feed minds so that our people learn to fish, then we can eat. With gratitude in hand and focus in mind, this must succeed. It's been forty-nine years since we've been knocking on this door, and we're here to knock some more, yeah. Well, let that knocking be the shoes that do the trodden together. Let us know not to talk the talk, but walk the talk together. Knowing that we can build to build better together. Because we, we are the courage that write our own chapters, the poems that will be read long after the voices that build character, architects of our future. Responsible for the air, our sons and daughters breed the crops that will feed. Because whatever plays in this world, let it be the children, the reflection of I, you, us, we, yes, yes, we. The people of the Caribbean seas.
Thank you. If that wasn't one of the most inspiring things I've seen.
Good. Now we will present the awards. There is an award ceremony for the Order of Caribbean Community Awards, actually. And that pertains to the highest awards that are given in this community, in the Caribbean community. They are in recognition and celebration of excellence among the people of this region and who exceed to be called to, who are exceeding beyond the call of duty and advancing in their territory's development. So with Alfredo Redou, we are privileged to have here with us in Suriname two of these very distinguished recipients, Ambassador Erwin LaRocque and Sir Isaac Vivian Alexander Richards. Unfortunately, the other two recipients of the Order of the Caribbean Community, Dame Billy Miller, who has joined, who, actually, it was meant for us to join her virtually from Barbados, but I was just informed that we have a little technical problem. No? Oh, oh, yeah. Okay, so she has joined us virtually from Barbados. Welcome, Dame Billy Miller. And also recipient Dr. David Rutter, who is actually unable to join us either virtually or here, live and well in Suriname, but his award will be presented to him at a later date. At this time, I would like to invite the the person who is going to read the citations. The nominee, Calypsoian David Brother of Trinidad, as mentioned, is unable to attend, but we have the citation for Foreign Minister, Prime Minister and Foreign Minister Dame Billy Miller of Barbados. And for that citation, we would like to invite Mr. Hakim Al Fayed Lal Mohamad for reading this first citation.
Thank you, dear MC. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the pleasure of honoring one of the most distinguished daughters of the Caribbean, Dame Billy Miller of Barbados, who has lived a life of dedicated service to the people of the Caribbean and who has been and who has been a trailblazer in the fight for the rights of women all over the world. Billy, as she is affectionately and universally known, was born on January 8, 1944 into an eminent Barbadian family. Her father, Frederick Freddie Miller, was repeatedly elected as a member of the Barbados Labour Party to the Parliament of Barbados from 1948 to 1966 and served as Minister of Health during his tenure. Billy grew up in her family home in Brighton-St. Michael. She was educated at Belair Junior School and Queen's College, Barbados, and went on to study law at King's College, then in Newcastle, and the Council of Legal Education in England. From 1969 to 1976, she practised as a barrister and attorney at law. She was the third woman to practise law at a private bar in Barbados. In 1976, she won the seat for the city of Bridgetown. With her hard work, the Medical Termination of Pregnancy Act was approved in 1983. Minister of Health and National Insurance, and she became the first woman to sit in the Cabinet of Barbados. She got re-elected seven times as a Member of Parliament for the city of Bridgetown. Between 1986 and 1999, she became Senator and Leader of Opposition Business in the Senate, a member of the Steering Committee of the Commonwealth Caribbean Resource Centre. From 1994 to 2003, the Minister of Foreign Affairs, Foreign Trade and International Business, and added to her work the portfolio of tourism and international transport from 1995 to 1999. She was the leader of the House of Assembly from 1994 to 2003. She was Deputy Prime Minister under the former Prime Minister Owen Arthur, Senior Minister in the Cabinet retaining the portfolios of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade until retirement. A few of her illustrious achievements. From 2014 to 2018, Member of a Dispute Settlement Panel of the World Trade Organisation. From 2017 to 2018, High Level Group on Commonwealth Governance. From 2010 to 2017, Member of the Board of Directors of Women in Development in New York. 2008 to 2014, Member of the Board of the Inter-American Doc. 2002 to 2008, Coordinator of CARICOM Ministerial Spokesperson with responsibility for external bilateral negotiations between African, Caribbean and Pacific States and the European Union, the World Trade Organisation and the free trade area of the American. In 2002, President of the Thirty-Second Regular Session of the General Assembly of the Organisation of American States, OAS. 1996 to 2002, Chairman of the Inter-American Development Bank's Advisory Council on Women in Development. From 2000 to 2001, Chairman of the Association of Caribbean States Ministerial Council. In 1998, President of the African Caribbean and Pacific States Council of Ministers in Brussels. From 1997 to 1998, The First Woman Chairman of the Caribbean Tourism Association. 1996 to 1999, Chairman of the Executive Committee of the Commonwealth Parliamentary Association. 1994, Chairman of the NGO Planning Committee for the First International Conference on Population and Development in Egypt. From 1981 to 1986, Member of the Council of the University of the West Indies. From 2009 until present, Vice President of the Barbados Association of Retired Persons. From 2011 until present, Patron of the Caribbean Institute for Women in Leadership. From 2016 until present, Patron of the Breastfeeding and Child Nutrition Foundation of Barbados. And 2019 until present, Member of Global Americans. Well, her list of honours and awards, both national and international, is also lengthy one. The Queen's Silver Jubilee Medal in 1977, The Barbados Centennial Award in 2000, The Grant Lee Adams Award in 2001, The National Order of Juan Mora Fernandez in 2001, The Woman of Great Esteem Award in 2002, The Dame Elsie Payne Award for Excellence in 2002, Grand Officer for the National Order of Benin, Honorary Fellow of the Honours College at Florida International University in 2001, Dame of Saint Andrew in 2003, The Order of Bernardo O'Higgins in the rank of Grand Cruz in 2006, Lifetime Achievement Award in 2006, Selected as the Laureate for the United Nations Populations Award in 2008, Honorary Degree of Doctor of Laws in 2014, and Created Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenipotentiary May 2018. Dame Billy Miller has been passionate about many things in all her life. Her beloved Bridgetown, serving the people of Barbados, promoting a robust role for NGOs in making lives better, advancing the cause of regional integration and unity and fighting for the rights of small island states in the international arena. She has been not only outspoken and unrelenting in her advocacy, but has also taken the time to encourage and mentor many young women, including the present Prime Minister of Barbados, the Honourable Mia Mortley, Queen's Council Member of Parliament. In this case, her mentorship has obviously borne precious fruit. It is with great pleasure, it is with great pleasure that the Caribbean community converge on Dame Billy Miller its highest award, the Order of the Caribbean Community. Let us all join in expressing our congratulations to Dame Billy Miller. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this stage, at this stage, I would like to invite the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade of Barbados, Senator Dr. Honourable Jerome Walcott, to receive the box with the decoration embellishments on behalf of the former Deputy Prime Minister and Foreign Minister Dame Billy Miller of Barbados. And of course, I would also like to invite the President of the Republic of Suriname, Chairman of the Conference, to bestow that honour through Dr. Walcott.
Congratulations to your country, but also to the awardees.
Thank you so much.
Please.
Thank you. I'm delighted on behalf of Dame Billy Miller to receive this honour on her behalf. I don't have to say much, you've heard it all. She's been a tremendous influence, not only to the Prime Minister, but also on me in Barbados and certainly on a number of us in Barbadian politics. She believes in CARICOM, believes in CARICOM unity, and it is indeed an honour this evening to receive this on her behalf. I thank you all.
Thank you.
We would like to request the President to remain on the stage for the other awardees. And I would like to invite Mr. Severn Hammond, SCG Ambassador, for the reading of the second citation of cricketer Sir Vivian Richard of Antigua and Barbuda.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will present to you the biography of the Honourable Sir Isaac Vivian Alexander Richards. Sir Isaac Vivian Alexander Richards is a national of Antigua and Barbuda. He was born on the 7th of March, 1952, and raised in Ovals. He comes from a working-class community on the southern side of the capital city, St. John's, which produced several national cricketers and footballers before him. Sir Vivian, known in Antigua as Vivi, is from a family of four boys. His father Malcolm is a prison officer who played football and cricket at national levels. His mother Gretel, a church-going stay-at-home mum, has been described as the pacifier of the family. Sir Vivian is father of four wonderful kids, Malley, Matara, Masaba and Nika. He was educated at the St. John's Boys' Primary School and the prestigious Antigua Grammar School, which contributed to his sport life and his discipline, character development. In 1974, he was selected into the West Indies team and within two years became a very important player for the West Indies. Between 1984 and 1991, Sir Vivian captained the West Indian cricket team and led the team to twenty-seven victories. He remains the only West Indies captain to have never lost a Test series. In the year 2000, he was named by a hundred-member panel of critic-experts appointed by the famous western cricketers Elmanek as one of the five western cricketers of the 20th century. The life story of Sir Vivian is emblematic and of a symbiotic love affair between an individual and a community. Pundits had gleaned that his batting style, aggressive and passionate, was rooted in and in expression of a defiant national culture. At that early age, he was seen as embodiment of the hopes and aspiration of his homeland. It was a burden that Vivi Richard accepted. He was rewarded and continues to reward his society for that faith expressed in him. Sport writers compete to describe his approach to batting, scoring the dictionary to find the most illustrative and descriptive words. Those who were excited by his power sprinkled cricket literature with words like "awesome", "brutal", "carnage", "dismantling", "intimidating", "insane", and "little". Those who saw beauty and art wrote arrogance, flamboyant, grace, mastery and swagger. Those who saw both beauty and power described his batting as calculated, menace and magnificent theatry. "The more adventurous, the more adventurous, unafraid of hyperbole", wrote of him, "bestriding the cricket world like the proverbial colossus of living beyond the boundary of the orthodox". All were aware of his self-confidence and fearlessness, noting that although he played against some of the most intimidating and fearsome fast bowlers that the critiquing world ever knew, he never wore a betting helmet. Sir Vivian understood and emphasised that cricket... As a player, he played the game with pride, intensity, that at times led to criticism of his leadership style. Sir Vivian saw cricket as a contribution to the international struggle against racism and white supremacy. His Afro-Caribbean social-political sensibilities blossomed through identification with Rastafarianism and the Black Power movement into pen-African thought and consciousness. An open check could not entice him to play cricket in apartheid South Africa. He considers his rejection of the million US dollar offer as the greatest innings he ever played. It earned him regional and international respect in which he still begs. He has written, "I would like to think that I carried my bet for the liberation of the African and other oppressed people everywhere." His honour and achievements. In 1994, Officer of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire for his services to cricket. In 1999, Knight Commander of the Order of the Nation by his native country, Antigua and Barbuda. In 2006, Knight of the Order of the National Hero. In 2007, the new cricket stadium in Antigua and Barbuda, replaced with a lifestyle statue, was named in his honour. The Calcutta Cricket Football Club honoured him with a lifetime membership. The Somerset Cricket Club has named one of the gates to the Townton Grounds in his honour. The Richards Bottom Trophy, named in his honour, was replaced with the... No. The richest bottom trophy named in his honour and replaced the western trophy to the winner of each West Indies... Indies England Test series. A grateful Caribbean community presents to you Sir Isaac Vivian Alexander Richards in his highest award to honour of the Caribbean community. Thank you.
I would like to invite on stage Sir Isaac Vivian Alexander Richards to receive the medallion. This will be presented to him by the Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, the President of Suriname, His Excellency Chandrika Pershad Santoki.
Sir Vivian, congratulations. On behalf... Yeah, on behalf of the Caribbean community, I have the honour to present to you the medal for your achievements, your lifetime achievements, for your legacy and moreover, the energy you left and inspiring a lot of other Caribbean people, a lot of young people to follow your path. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. If you allow me maybe to just say a few words. I don't think I'm going to take too long. I'll try my best. First of all, all protocols observed. I guess we have had a long night of protocols tonight, so let me keep it a little short. I am honoured and humbled to be chosen to receive this award. The Order of the Caribbean Community, OCC. As a young boy growing up in my small community of Ovilles, in my island of Antigua and Barbuda, I never imagined that I would travel the world playing a sport that I loved and in my twilight years I would be blessed with such a high honour. I excelled at cricket because I put my heart and soul into it. Each time I put my maroon cap on, I walked out onto the field, I recognised that I was not representing myself or my island or just the West Indies team. I recognised that I was representing my people, people who look like me all over the world. I wanted people... I wanted people who look like me to know that we can achieve great things. My success was their success, and I could not afford to let my team down or my people down. Yes, I was happy that I was able to uplift my people by my performance on the cricket field. I was also happy to see the end of apartheid in my lifetime. Indeed, sport played a part in that accomplishment. And I can tell you, there are times people ask you questions about the greatest innings you ever played and what's this about the cricket bat and all that. But I look a little bit beyond that, and you would have heard tonight in the citation that "not putting my signature to that cheque was the greatest innings that I've ever played". In closing, I'd like to thank my parents Malcolm and Gretel Richards for instilling in me a pride and self-confidence which I exhibited on the cricket field. I learned from these two humble people that to be successful, you have to believe in yourself and you must always give 100%. Just a little parting word to the leaders of the region, to the leaders of the Caribbean community who have bestowed this high honour on me. I challenge you to do your best to uplift our people. We need to demonstrate to the world in the best way possible that we are capable of great achievements. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to now invite Ms Sherman Panza to read the citation of our fourth and last recipient, the former Secretary-General, Ambassador Erwin La Rock.
Thank you, MC. Good evening, everyone. Now we have Ambassador Erwin La Rock. Ambassador Erwin La Rock is best described as a regionalist who dedicated his time and efforts toward realising the regional integration agenda set by the CARICOM heads of government. In doing so, he has served as Assistant Secretary-General at the CARICOM Secretariat and the Seventh Secretary-General of our community. Ambassador La Rock was born in the Commonwealth of Dominica, where he received his early education. Subsequently, he attended the Queen's College, the New School for Social Research and New York University, where he majored in political philosophy, political economics and economics. In the Commonwealth of Dominica, he accepted the position of Permanent Secretary in the Ministry of Trade, Industry and Enterprise Development and subsequently served as the Permanent Secretary in the Ministries of Tourism and Foreign Affairs. There is no doubt that his tenure in the public service of the Commonwealth of Dominica prepared him for his duties and responsibilities at the CARICOM Secretariat. Ambassador La Rock joined the staff of the CARICOM Secretariat in Georgetown, Guyana in 2005 as Assistant Secretary-General in 2011. He was appointed Secretary-General by the CARICOM heads of government and served for two consecutive terms. Upon his appointment, he immediately became the champion for reform at the Secretariat. With the assistance of staff, consultants and various organs of CARICOM, the first CARICOM strategic plan 2015-2019 was approved at the Conference of Heads of the CARICOM in 2014. The strategic plan outlined a framework of social and economic development with Caribbean citizens as the beneficiaries of the action to be implemented by the Secretariat, organs and institutions of the community as well as member states. The preparation and adoption of the first strategic plan was indeed a major achievement for Ambassador La Rock and his staff. His major achievements are listed accordingly. Restructuring the Secretariat to make it more efficient and effective. Strengthening the internal system to improve on audits, communication and monitoring of results. Establishing the CARICOM Committee of Ambassadors to enhance governments and advance implementation in member states. Strengthening the Caribbean Public Health Agency. Strengthening the Caribbean Health and Food Safety Agency to perform a coordinating and organising role for effective and efficient regional sanitary and phytosanitary regime to benefit trade and agriculture. Establishing the Caribbean Centre for Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency. Establishing the Caribbean Community Administrative Tribunal to arbitrate employment disputes for all staff at the Secretariat and other CARICOM institutions as these bodies being international organisations enjoy immunity from local laws and before national courts. A new multilateral services agreement to liberalise air services in the region. And also various protocols and agreements adopted and implemented including on public procurement and contingent rights. His emphasis on and interest in youth was a major driver for his work. He oversaw the development of the CARICOM Human Resource Development Strategy. 2030, an action plan was a keen advocate of the creativity for employment and business opportunity programmes which forested an entrepreneurial spirit among our youth. Secretary-General La Rock was also instrumental in the re-engagement of the private sector with regular interaction with head of governments and other community organs, resulting in the formation of the CARICOM Private Sector Organisation, which was formally established in 2021, and is an associated institution of the community. He worked to the end, bringing global attention to issues that were significantly impacting member territories such as climate change, the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and in particular the accusations of vaccines, blacklisting, endearing, security, maritime and border protection. Issues of staff's tenure and advancement were fixture on his agenda, as was the budgetary limitation of the Secretariat, and he used every opportunity to dialogue with head and colleagues, always hopeful for better outcomes. Throughout the many seasons of global and regional challenges, natural, economic and man-made, Ambassador La Rock maintained his calm nature and skillfully navigated the Caribbean community through raging water and roguers landscapes. For his contribution and devotion to Caribbean unity and sustained commitment to the regional integration and advance, we applaud Ambassador La Rock for outstanding service to the region. We salute him for an indelible mark on this institution and the region and conform on him the community highest award.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I would like to invite on stage Ambassador Erwin La Rock to receive his medallion and of course, our President and Conference of Heads of the Caribbean Community, President Chandrika Pershad Santoki.
Congratulations, Secretary-General. I have the honour and pleasure to hand over to you the award. And everyone have witnessed the achievements. With that achievements, you have left a legacy on which we will build further, but you have created also a track within the Caribbean community which we can follow to create a better community with your contribution, what you have left. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr President.
Thank you very much, Mr President. All protocols observed. Like, I've addressed this opening ceremonies of this conference more than 20 times, I believe, and tonight I am speechless. I think it's the first time I'm really lost for words, so I shall limit my remarks to just saying thank you. Thank you to the Conference of Heads of Government for bestowing this greatest honour to me. I want to thank the Conference as well for the first honour they gave me was to allow me to serve them. I thought that was a great honour in itself, that I was allowed to serve my community, my Conference of Heads and the Caribbean people. I also want to thank and recognise the hard-working staff of the CARICOM Secretariat, past and present. They are in the engine room of integration and they make it happen 24/7, and without them, tonight for me could not be possible. I also have to thank my family and my dear wife who was there with me, who has stood by me. Thank you. Blessings.
Mr Ambassador, I would like to invite you to stay on stage to speak on behalf of all the awardees to... Yes, you have a microphone. Yes.
I've spoken for themselves. I just want to add my own words of congratulations to the Honourable Dame Billy Miller, OCC, and to the Honourable Sir Vivian Richards, OCC. As I said to him and I said to Comrade Ralph, he's a legend and a hero in his own time. And as we recognise as such, I'm aware of the work that he's done in trying to reform cricket with the community. And just one little anecdote about Dame Billy. She used to say when she'd represent the region, and I've had the privilege to work alongside her, "When she puts on her red battlewear, beware, because she's going to bat for the region", and she did. I saw it in the European Union on Lomé, I saw it at the UN and other places. So on the behalf of my colleague Sir Viv and my dearest friend Dame Billy, I say thank you as well. Thank you and good night and blessings to all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ambassador.
Now, for the last performance of the night, we have a special treat. It's called the "Ala Condre Drum" and literally translated, that means "drums of all of our countries". Please enjoy. Please enjoy.